Welcome, everyone. We're just gonna wait a few seconds for everybody to come into the Zoom windows. We've got quite a wonderful group already. I see lots of familiar faces from all over California. This is great. Okay, so, welcome to Poets and Writers California Virtual Town Hall Meeting. My name is Jamie Asai Fitzgerald and I am the Director of Poets and Writers California Office and our Readings and Workshops West Grant Program. I'm here today with my colleague Dan Tran Kong Wen and she is going to be helping with the tech for this meeting as well as helping to manage our Q and A period and discussion period. So, thank you, Dan Tran. I'd like to acknowledge that I'm working out of Los Angeles on the indigenous land of the Gabrielino Tongva people and Dan Tran is working out of New York City on the land of the Lenape. I'd also like to thank the California Arts Council for its support of these convenings. These meetings align with our mission to foster the professional development of writers, to promote communication throughout the literary community, and to make literature available to the widest possible public. This is the second in a series of four town halls in which we bring to you a special guest who will present on a topic relevant to writers and the writing community. Our last event was with Peter J. Harris, poet and culture worker, and it was a really wonderful event. All of these events will be recorded and posted on our YouTube channel. So if you're interested in looking back at past events or if there's something that you missed and wanted to refer back to, you can always check out the YouTube video. So, after two virtual check-ins, which we also held with literary presenters, the consensus was that people wanted to learn more about different virtual platforms for presenting literary events. And everyone seemed to feel like this information would be useful both to presenters and to writers who are doing this work. Now that we're eight months into the pandemic and it looks like there's gonna be many more months ahead where events can only be presented virtually, we thought this would be a really useful presentation for all of you. And I'm very grateful to Toby Harper of Red Hen Press who immediately stepped up and volunteered to share their expertise on this topic. And so Toby has prepared a short presentation and then we'll have time to ask questions. And then I will give a little update on our Readings and Workshops Grant Program and the funding available for literary events. And then finally, I hope that we'll have time for any announcements that you might like to share about work that you're doing in your community. Last but not least, I just wanted to encourage you to use the chat to list your questions, to make comments, to share resources, to post announcements about events or projects that you would like the group to know about. And we'll save that chat and send it to you after the meeting along with a roster of all those who registered and attended and a link to the YouTube video if it's available at that time. So, for now, I am going to introduce Toby. They are the Deputy Director of Red Hen Press, founder and editor of Quill, a queer publishing series, publisher of the Los Angeles Review and instructor for the UCLA Extension Publishing and Editing Program. As a queer speaker, event curator, literary warrior, tech whiz, and jello wrestler, Toby works to enjoy the diversity of experiences that life has to offer. We ask that you please stay muted unless called on to speak. Thanks so much for being here and without further ado, I'd like to welcome Toby.
Hello, everyone. I forgot that jelly wrestling bit was on there. It is a lot of fun though. It's not a real sport, I have to admit, but lots of fun. Alright, so I'm only gonna have 15 minutes, so there's, I could probably go on for 15 minutes about each of these. But instead, I'm gonna do my best to just go through. I guess I kind of curious. Let's have a look at the chat. How many of you have used? I don't know. If you could just say if you've used it or not. You don't have to say you haven't used it, but if you've used Zoom or Crowdcast or StreamYard. I'd love to get a sense if like everyone's using. I hear my, look at the gallery view. I'm gonna look at all you two. So everyone's used you. Can, wait, I can see all. Can you raise your hands if you've used them? Yeah, everyone's using them. Right here we are. We're on it right now. I guess you've all used it. Cool. You've used all three. Nice. Not a lot of people have worked with StreamYard before. Okay, great. Well, whether you've used them or not, maybe you haven't used it for an event. So I'd say that Zoom is, you know, it's the slightly more corporate bells and whistle one. It's the only one that charges by user. I think that's important to know because it is $15 per user and there's all sorts of things. If you want this extra feature, that's actually $30 a month or $50 a month. It's also per user. So it's definitely the more expensive of the option. But of course, it's the only one that also doubles as a meeting platform. That's pretty handy, right? Look at us all here. So we've done a few events that were like this, right? A few of us, just like all talking together. We've done our big gala we did on Zoom. We actually chose not to do that as a webinar because we wanted there to be a moment where everyone could do breakout rounds. That was more and less complicated than I expected. If you're, if you want to do a giant, a giant event with breakout rounds, I can talk to you about that later. Because it's a little more complicated. Let's see. In terms of Zoom, there's definitely a lot of extra security, right? That can cause accessibility issues. There's always updates. There's like glitches. People drop off. If you try to, sometimes if you're the admin and you try to create a breakout room, like you as the admin will drop off and you have to come back. So there's a fair amount of glitches, but yeah, fairly, fairly helpful. Also, the waiting room is pretty excellent and it really helps you to get things started before you let people in. That's one, I'd say weirdly, the waiting room and the breakout rounds are my two favorite things about Zoom that I haven't found, haven't quite found anywhere else. Zoom also has a lot of settings. If you've ever been on the admin side, there are so many settings to go through. There's the whole list of settings that's like for all of your meetings and your whole account and then there's settings per meeting itself. There's like breakout rooms will accidentally close in 10 minutes if you don't unset it. There's all these, there's a lot of thing. You have to be fairly well, like well-trained on Zoom to run an event and have it go correctly, I would say. What is nice, though, is if you do one of those like this, if you're doing a big recording, what, what gives you, what it gives you afterwards, at least what it gives you afterwards at this point is four different videos. I think actually five different videos. So one is just the share screen. One is the gallery view and one's the presenter view. And then there's another two versions of the gallery view and the presenter view with timestamps in them. So if you wanna like have an event and then afterwards be able to cut and paste like different sections, like zoom out the audience, zoom into the presenter, that can be pretty cool. That's what we were able to do after our benefit. And the other thing with Zoom, well, so the one thing is like there's, so it does double as a meeting platform, which is helpful. And then you can have an admin on the backend, right? That's like running all of the teams and assigning licenses or assigning certain permissions. And the thing with Crowdcast and StreamYard, you don't have that because there's one login and anybody who has the login can, can use it simultaneously. So it's a Zoom is $14.99 per user per month. We found we pretty quickly needed two users per month in order to like really, you know, otherwise you could literally can only have one meeting at a time. Or you'll see one of those pop-ups that says presenter already has a meeting in progress. If you want to do broadcasting, that's, it used to be another $100 a month. I think now it's only an extra $40 a month to be able to broadcast out to Facebook and whatnot. It's extra if you want more than 200 attendees. Basically, there's a lot of extras in Zoom, like there's a lot of like à la carte options. You can like add two things. Yeah, so I'd say if you want a closed event, kind of like if you wanted to close event like this, you could do that with $14.99 a month. If you wanted to be able to broadcast it, it'd be at least, at least $55 a month. In terms of Crowdcast, I would say Crowdcast is my least favorite for no personal reasons, just that I've had it glitch on me several times. I know authors who like events have closed out. But it's also kind of one of the cooler ones, right? Like, so there's the chat. It feels a little more intimate. They've got those Q and A polls. They have a built-in link to like donate something or to buy a book, which is really cool. Out of all the options, I feel like Crowdcast is, I don't know, I was about to say Crowdcast is the most intimate. I would say it's the most intimate in terms of the versions of all of these that, that don't, like right now, we're seeing each other's videos, but like for a public event, you wouldn't necessarily do that, right? So Crowdcast really helps to bring that chat in a way, like whenever I'm on a Crowdcast event, I feel like the chats are always just rolling and rolling and everyone's like, it just feels like a nice closed event, right? I mean, again, there's some problems, I think. Wonder, no. I just know, I personally, without having worked on Crowdcast myself much, I personally know people whose audio cut out in the middle of the event. One, just the server went down. But I do think that they're working on it pretty quickly and it seems like, it sounds like it's getting better. And for that one, the pricing, the minimum pricing is $30 a month. And then there's like a $50 a month version, $100 a month version, depending on what, what you're looking for. And if there's questions on that, we can go to that pricing, specific pricing. Oh, actually, the other thing that's really great about Crowdcast is that you can really run the event within the program itself. You can do customized emails like from within, within Crowdcast. You don't have to like grab the Zoom link and then go create emails or grab the StreamYard link or whatever. It does require registration, obviously. But yeah, being able to do it with N is pretty great. StreamYard is my favorite. Maybe because I've used it the most. But actually, I think the reason it's my favorite is because accessibility is the most important thing to me for an event. And I want people to be able to get to the event, not worry about registrations, not worry about whether something's upgraded or updated or whatever that is. StreamYard, basically, I give a link to any of the presenters who I want to be on screen, like they get one specific link. And then from StreamYard, I broadcast directly onto Facebook, YouTube, LinkedIn. Because it's YouTube, I can embed that onto my homepage, onto the website, onto any website I want. I can also use a, this might not make sense to everyone, but there's like a custom RTMP code you can use to build it directly into a Facebook event. So you could actually start StreamYard, like you know, normally if you have a Facebook event, there's like, you have to create some link. Here's a virtual event to go here and the event is sort of just like a housing for attendees. So with StreamYard, you can build it in. So when people went to that event, it would actually be streaming virtually in that Facebook event. That's something, an upgrade that I think Facebook's been working on and they just finalized it a couple of months ago and it's actually started working in the last month. And it works pretty well. So for me, StreamYard is the most simple to use. StreamYard, I think, I think. Yeah, yeah, that's correct. Crowdcast has no free options. StreamYard actually has changed their pricing options. It used to be $14.95 or $25 and now it is zero or $25 or $50. So StreamYard actually has a free option now. And I think I'm going to, I'm gonna focus on showing y'all StreamYard. I think that's the one people are the least familiar with. Okay. This is the fun part where I ask, because everyone can see this. Okay, cool. Alright, so this is StreamYard. So there's no, in terms of the email, so I, when I log in, I put in my email, it emails me a code and that's how I get into the account. It's the only way to log into the account. You can have multiple people log in and they'll all have the same admin abilities. So when you first log in, this is how it looks, nice and simple. You can create a broadcast. Obviously, I've created a broadcast without a schedule, so I can enter Broadcast Studio. I'll show you that in a second. Just giving examples. So these are the past broadcasts that we have had. I think we've also done some, we also work with the Broad Stage and I have, mostly because we were doing this so often, I ended up actually doing, I'm now producing those events as well. So there's these, another five with the Broad Stage, but basically you can see here, this one is broadcast to Facebook, LinkedIn, YouTube, the StreamYard Facebook Live. So this is the one that allows me to broadcast simultaneously in all of these locations. And as soon as that broadcast is complete and I click End Broadcast, the entire video posts in full immediately on all of those sites. Of course, you can remove it if you want, but it's just, it's just so smooth. So in terms of upcoming broadcasts, I will just, obviously you can create one. I can decide where I'm gonna broadcast this to. I don't broadcast them necessarily all at once. Like Quill is the queer publishing series I created, so I typically only broadcast there if it happens to be a queer event or if it's featuring one of my Quill authors. But we pretty much always do Red Hen Press, Facebook, LinkedIn, YouTube, and then the STMP code. Because we have the, the highest version of StreamYard and we can broadcast to eight simultaneous locations. So again, you put the title, description, you can schedule it for later. Facebook has some extra rules about not starting past 10, 10 minutes past your start time. But basically, you can build this all here and as soon as I click, as soon as I like start the event, it'll actually put a sample. It'll like say like this video is going to start in however many days and hours on each of those things. So my YouTube channel or our YouTube channel will pop up saying like this video will start. It'll have the, the image, the like, the, the starter image that I choose. And so basically, in all these locations, people will be all this, like, if I do this a week ahead of time, people will see that pop up and be able to click, remind me when this, when this starts. So I'm gonna jump into the actual practice studio to show you what that looks like. I gotta look to the side. Alright, so it's checking my camera and mic. It's gonna be a little upset with me because I'm on Zoom. You know that they don't like to do that. Okay, cool. So you can see, it's again, it's a little upset about my video, but that's fine. Alright, so. This is, so obviously, this is our Fall Book Tour. This was our last one. One of my favorite things about StreamYard is how cool the branding is. So this again, broadcast right everywhere live. So when someone sees our event on Facebook, first it's gonna come up with this cool overlay I created. I could also swap that out for, thanks for tuning in at the end of the show. And then if I was on screen, I wonder if I can do that. I don't think it's gonna let me. Nope. Oh, it did. Look at that. Cool. Alright, so, so if I did this, I can then put on overlays. I can have this one, which says Live with Red Hen Press and down here, you can see Find These Books App. So I'd say this one is my favorite. I'm putting my own video on here just so you can really see what the overlay looks like. So alright, there's a, see some of that. There's also things I haven't tried. Look at this video clip that counts down to 30. Well, let's see if I pull myself out and it goes back to the background. Again, you can change your backgrounds. These are all customizable. You can drop in your little logo. If you, if like this overlay feels a little heavy-handed and you just want a little logo, you can pop that in. And then let's say you have a bunch of partners that you work with, like we tend to. Alright, I'll come back to my video. Oh, here it is. Okay, whatever. You can still hear me. So let's say you have a bunch of partners. You can do stuff like this. Like we had an event with Grey Wolf. So this is our partner with Grey Wolf branding. And so rather than have a bunch of overlays for all these different events, this one just says Live with Red Hen, right? So this is the event card that we had. This was back, this was actually back in June, so there wasn't as much branding we were working with back then. But again, so all of these, we had a Black Lives Matter event, so this one again, very, this one we kept very simple, just a card, just an overlay, so people know what's up. Boreal Books is one of our imprints. That's in Alaska, right? So we've got like a whole new brand color. The names, just like you can, you can just put different overlays for every single partner you have. So that it's not quite, it's just not such a pain. Otherwise, this would just be loaded up with all sorts of extra videos and additions. Let's see, oh, and other features here. So these are comments. This is sort of a fake Facebook comment. So when people, so when this is broadcasting to Facebook, YouTube, all that jazz, LinkedIn even, people can respond, can, can comment, right? Like, like you would on any video, like comment on Facebook, comment on YouTube and it'll pop up here. And so if I wanted to, I could click it and actually have that video, that pop up on the screen, like if it was a Q and A. I could click that question, have it, have it pop up exactly on the video and then make it respond to it and then I could pull it off. It's also things like banners. These are super cool. I don't use them that often, but they're super fun. Or you can just do, you know, big ol' things like that. Branding, private chat. Part of why I like StreamYard so well is that I'm working only with my presenters and I'm able to chat privately with them. So I can say like, hello, your mic is off. And that will only go to my presenters. Alternatively, actually from here, I could, it won't let me right now, because this is a practice studio. But I can type in here and have it go out to YouTube or Facebook. Like I can actually write to all of those destinations all at once as Red Hen Press. And that is obviously super helpful. And then for setting, and you know, whatever, there's all these different settings we can go into. There is still a green screen ability if you're into that. And with that, I think I'm gonna come back for questions and see if I forgot anything. Let me fix my video.
Thank you so much, Toby. That was lightning fast. But also super informative for anybody like me who has not actually used StreamYard. So I hope that other folks here found that helpful. And I think we have a whole bunch of questions that have come into the chat. And I hope that Dan Tran can help us identify what those questions might be and who asked them.
Yeah, I could, I could start from the top if you'd like, Dan Tran.
Sure, yeah. Just let me know where you're starting.
Okay, I think. Yeah, yeah. Zoom, 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 and then down to, is there an open source, no fee option? The only one I know of is the one I just discovered, actually when I was looking at pricing, StreamYard is now optioning a free option. I mean, you won't obviously for the free one have all of the same, like you'll have StreamYard logos, you'll have stuff like that. But it's free and it's the only one that offers a free option. So that's cool. Well, I guess Zoom does, but only for meetings, right? Only for like 40-minute meetings. Are you saying StreamYard? Yes, yes, I am. Yeah, as far as I know, Crowdcast does not have a free option, nothing that I saw, even their most basic version. StreamYard does, again, it's, it's free, $25. I can go back to that, just to double check, but I think I can say, StreamYard is $25 for basically, really the only difference between the $25 version and the $50 version is whether you can broadcast to three simultaneous locations or eight simultaneous locations, if you wanted to do that. It's also worth knowing that if you broadcast to YouTube, YouTube itself, you can like Google it or I can help you with it. But you can use your YouTube channel and embed that onto your website or onto 100 different websites. So like, that's sort of a sneaky way to use one broadcast option to like post it all or this. Like when we do it, we have it, yeah, Facebook, LinkedIn, Facebook, LinkedIn, YouTube, and then on our Red Hen page and then on another Red Hen page. What is good for videos and films? Alex, would you mind clarifying your question a little bit? Or may, oh no, your video's on, so maybe you'll write it. What's good for videos and films? Actually, Crowdcast, I'm not positive how good that one would be for film. I would say that StreamYard is pretty good. Zoom is what I use if I need to like film somebody for five minutes, like saying something. But I guess I could pretty easily do that in StreamYard as well. I guess it really depends on what you're doing with it. Let's see if he said. Okay, we'll come back to you, Alice, if I didn't answer that question properly. Melcent, can you show us how to set up a site? Oh, yeah, yeah. So are there channels? Melcent?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hey, Melcent. Okay, what do you mean, the, the site, like Red Hen and Quills? Oh, like the, the channels I was moving towards?
You went into StreamYard and then you selected Red Hen, Quills, those little things. Are those things you set up in another site? Or how do you get those? Like if I were gonna start just on StreamYard with knowing nothing, just opening it up, I'd need something to choose from, like you chose from the Red Hen. So.
Right, right. So I added those. I like created those as destinations. So basically, I like created our StreamYard account and then I said like, connect to Facebook and I logged in with my administrative Facebook account to link to our events. And the same thing with Quill, that's a Facebook page that I manage. So basically, I connected it to our already existing social media channels. I don't think, yeah.
And they're called destinations in the StreamYard.
Yeah, they're called destinations. Yeah, exactly. The only one that's really tricky is LinkedIn. They are very particular about who they approve for video events. So if you want to use LinkedIn, for whatever reason, start early, ask often. I think it was my third or fourth ask that finally got us approved. And it's not like a person said, no, you don't have enough of anything. And just like, the system just kind of kicked it out over and over. And I think it took like five or six months. But weirdly, now it's, we're actually getting like views and comments. I didn't even know people really hung out on LinkedIn, but.
Thank you.
Yeah, totally. Thank you, Melcent. Okay, let's see. What sort of events have you used these platforms for? Okay, so Crowdcast is the one I know of. It seems like most indie bookstores are using Crowdcast as far as I have seen, maybe a little bit of Zoom. I think that, let me see. The only time I really use Zoom for an event is if it's truly like a closed event, mostly because the broadcasting on Zoom is quite expensive. Zoom is also helpful if you want to be able to see everyone's faces like this. If you really want to see your audience's faces, that, this is the only way to do that. As far, well, okay, out of these three, out of these three, I'm not gonna say the only way to do this. Let me see, what did I want to zoom for that, for broadcasts, for the breakout rounds? Crowdcast again is nice for, I think specifically for bookstores, because not only can you hold an event, but you can actually put it on a, you can say, make this a public event and people can scroll through and see what events are coming up and see your event and just discover you, totally regardless of your marketing or attempts. So if you have like, that's almost like, I'm not gonna bring Twitch into this. But basically, Crowdcast allows you to have a specific following on that platform. And you kind of have to maybe build a little bit of a following on that platform. What's nice about StreamYard is that it's just going into your already existing platforms. And then, yeah, so StreamYard, if you don't need to see people's faces specifically and you want there to be like, just, just completely accessible, accessible, free, no registration, no updates necessary, just the easiest thing to watch. And the easiest thing, I would say out of all the ones I've used, it's the easiest one for me to get presenters on to, even when they have like pretty much no technology, like not great with technology. It's just like you just click a link and you're in. Very, it's pretty, pretty easy. And so I say StreamYard is the most foolproof of them. Images, branding images we used, we, we created those. I'd say a couple of them we created on InDesign, you know, we're book publishers, but, who isn't? But also just Canva. It doesn't have to be something so complicated. You can just use Canva. Pretty sure Canva's free, right? Yeah, I don't think I'm paying for it. Yeah, so Canva's free. They give you specifically the, they give you the dimensions, obviously, you need for different things. You can even upload videos if you want. The only trouble I would say, I guess, no, maybe there's not. The overlay, it has to be, it has to be a see-through image, obviously. But basically, I think you just pop it out. Sorry, they give you the dimensions and yeah, I think we just did in Canva at the specific size and it was, it was pretty easy. And it took, you know, for the first few events, I'd say our branding wasn't quite as cool. It was just like a logo, maybe a bar. And as we got into it, we started to find our vibe and what we were into. That's when we really started to get all that branding and all of those overlays together. Let's see. Tracking attendance, surveying attendees. Okay, yeah, that's one thing I forgot to say. In terms of follow-up, StreamYard is the least successful in terms of following up and retaining emails. That, that is, that is a real, a real con for StreamYard. So it does not, so in terms of tracking attendance, I can see how many people attended. I can also go check afterwards on YouTube, on all, whatever, all the platforms and see how many people were viewing it. There are ways to do that through the platform. I don't know if I've actually looked into engagement lately, because we, we stopped, we've paused our events a couple of weeks ago. But in terms of surveying attendees, that one is way, way easier. And Crowdcast specifically also. But in terms of surveying attendees, that one is way, way easier. And Crowdcast specifically, also Zoom. Not easy at all, maybe impossible with StreamYard. And then in terms of tracking attendance, yeah, you can, you can see live viewers here and then afterwards you can see them. And then also archived views add up as well. You can go back and look at all those. I guess it's also worth saying that for virtual events, I've found we get basically ten times as much the attendance as we did in person. I think just because it's, you know, people can do it from all over the world, whether they were able to easily leave their houses before COVID or not. There's just like a whole, a lot more of attendees. If it's a long film. Yeah, I think you could do that on StreamYard or Zoom. They both afterwards, you know, either way. And you can also record on StreamYard and not broadcast. Like in that broadcast studio, I could have created a test recording and then downloaded and looked at it. I would say basically for creating, I mean, maybe this is obvious. But for creating videos in any of these, you almost certainly need some kind of video editor afterwards to like clean up the beginning or clean up the end. Right? When somebody's like, you know, testing their video or something. StreamYard, StreamYard is automatically a webinar, I guess. Maybe I don't understand that question perfectly. For Jerry Garcia. Jerry, yeah, sorry, would you clarify in terms of a webinar?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking for the option of, I've been on at readings where you're only seeing the, the hosts and the readers. You don't have the whole screen. And that's, I'm trying to find the best way to do that.
Yeah, yeah, totally. So you could do that in StreamYard or Crowdcast. StreamYard is automatically, that's all they do. Actually, Crowdcast as well, you can't see the videos of the presenters. Zoom, you can do a webinar option, but again, it's like fifty five dollars a month. I mean, you know, not that bad, but, but only for one user. But yeah, you can definitely do that for both of those.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, going through. Questions. Yes, Canva, oh, Canva, sorry, am I saying Canvas? So no, StreamYard does not, so not only does StreamYard not retain emails or contact info, it doesn't touch that at all. So right, like if, so like, you know, if you're doing a Zoom event or a Crowdcast, right, like maybe you get eighty RSVPs and like fewer people come. Or they like can't find the link or like whatever it is, whatever reason they can't get in. But if they do get in, of course, you have their emails, you have their names. So a StreamYard, what you lose in being able to track your followers, you gain in just having open access to anybody who wants to see the event. So it's definitely like, I really, really wish I could do one, I could get, retain people and do StreamYard. But, but that is unfortunately something I've, I've let go of for the sake of accessibility.
I have a question from S. Pearl Sharp. They're asking, is there a video edit system that you recommend for StreamYard?
Not necessarily for like. Not necessarily. I'm trying to remember what we've even been using. Actually, it's Tan Scott, our team, who's been helping us with the video. Very, very light video editing, like clipping the end, clipping the beginning. But really, it's always, it's just going to be a video file. So any video editor. Honestly, you can even just do them online, but like any video editor that can just edit those sorts of things at all, or, or that can handle like rendering the video afterwards, should, should work. And we certainly haven't had to use anything particular. In terms of indie bookstores and why they prefer Crowdcast. I believe it is because Zoom is expensive. StreamYard doesn't let you retain customers and not only does Crowdcast let you retain all that, also their bookstores, right? So it's not like one press trying to do all these events. It's a bookstore that's doing these events hopefully, you know, many times a week. So they are, they have, they have a following, they're building that following within Crowdcast and whatever other stuff they already had. And also because there's a link, so that's the, the one thing that's super cool about Crowdcast is like in the event itself, you can have a link that just stays there. That anybody can click on any moment to buy the book. Like with StreamYard, we, we drop it into the chat, like I, like I was saying, how I can write a comment and it goes out to like all the destinations at once. I can write, like, if you're interested in any of these books, go to this link as a comment and it'll show up as a, as a comment on any of those platforms. But again, Crowdcast itself, it just like holds a link, whether it's a donation because you're a nonprofit, or whether it's a buy link for the book, for the author who is presenting specifically. This is sorry, this is a lot of information. If there's anything that's super specific that you want to ask me, I'll drop my email to. Do any of these platforms help you monetize events? Yeah, absolutely. I'd say Crowdcast seems to be the easiest one for that. I've also heard of people like, you know, making people be like, getting tickets on Eventbrite, right? And then you can just do whatever you do. But out of the ones that I've looked through, Crowdcast seems to be, does, has Zoom added? I don't think Zoom has added the capability to like pay for tickets within their platform. I don't think so. No, no. But Crowdcast definitely does. So you, Crowdcast, you can do it, a public free event. You can have it be private event where they need a password. You can have it be where they have to buy tickets, although you might, I might have had to upgrade for that feature. And I can also have it be for Patreons only, Patreons only. And that's one. So basically, like, if you have a dedicated following, you can do a special event that was only available to your paying, your monthly paying dedicated following. How about library events? Same as bookstores with Crowdcast. You know? I don't know. I don't know what libraries are using. Has anyone seen a library do an event lately and seen what platform they were using? I would love to know. That's a great question.
Mrs. Melis said that the library where we have our series Loose Lips, they use Zoom.
They use Zoom, okay, yeah. I was wondering, because libraries don't really sell so much. Yeah, I can see that Zoom, I would say a lot of people don't know about StreamYard. I think that's why it's underused, because I think it's one of the easier ones. Yeah, a lot of them are not open. But yeah, Zoom would make sense. Crowdcast wouldn't really make sense for a library, I don't think. Unless they somehow really had like a social media person, you know, who was like working that super hard. But otherwise, Zoom would probably be the easiest. Most people default to Zoom just because everyone has it and they feel, people feel uncomfortable about asking anyone to move to a different platform, right? Like Blue Jeans is another fine event software that's just like Zoom. But just nobody uses it because no one knows about it. Yeah, Zoom. I think Zoom is probably the easiest default. All right.
I think that, is that all the questions? I think that's. That's where we'll stop with some of these questions. Thank you so much, Toby. And I will add that I do think that libraries, if they are doing events, the ones that I've heard of are using Zoom. Which makes a lot of sense because it's more about interacting with community members. And that's why I hold these events on Zoom. I know it's often a lot of people and, and we can't always see everyone's faces, but I love seeing your faces. And these events kind of came out of our literary roundtable meetings, which we used to hold in person. And the whole point of those meetings was for us to be together, to interact. To have conversations. And so this is the closest approximation to that, that that I could come up with during this period. So thank you so much, Toby, and I hope everybody got some useful information there and can check out some of these options for presenting your events. I wanted to take just a few minutes to update you on the readings and workshops grant program that poets and writers offers in California. And I wanted to let you know that we are still accepting applications for virtual readings and virtual creative writing workshops. And I encourage you to apply. Now is a really great time to plan your spring events and to apply as early as you can. We have updated our funding guidelines to accept applications for weeks in advance of the event as opposed to eight weeks, which was our deadline before. So we shortened that window to try to be more responsive to events that are just kind of popping up on the fly as we're all learning how to navigate these new waters. So I especially want to encourage folks in California who are not in metropolitan areas to apply for funding. And I am more than happy to talk to anybody who would like to hold a virtual event and needs advice or is interested in finding a writer who would be able to present. Whether that be a writing workshop or a reading, I'm, I'm happy to offer advice and act as a sounding board to encourage events in California outside of metropolitan areas where there seemed to be a little bit more activity for this kind of thing. So please do feel free to reach out to me if you have literary events coming up. Or if you would like to plan one and you're not quite sure where to begin. Okay, so we have a little bit of time. And so I wanted to open it up to the group to see if anybody has announcements they like to share with each other. And what we'll do is in the participant window, if you go down to your controls and click on participants. You'll have the option to raise your hand, I believe. And we will try to call on you if you raise your hand, if you'd like to share anything, a resource or an event that you have coming up.
Jamie, I think there's a quick question in the chat here from Annie Quinn. Can a literary event be an author presenting their book?
The answer is yes, as long as it's a reading from the book. So our funding program funds live virtual readings. So we don't fund panel discussions, lectures or talks. It has to be a reading. Okay, I'm looking for anybody who would like to make an announcement or make a comment, share an event coming up. Any knowledge that you have about virtual platforms that wasn't talked about.
I see Mark Lippman has your hand raised. I'm gonna unmute.
Hi, everyone. First, thank you, Toby and Jamie for putting this together. Got some fantastic information today. We basically have no presence on literary events virtually right now. So this is like the launching point for, for us getting going on this. So thank you very much for all that information. I just wanted to let everyone know that today we launched a call for submissions for a new anthology. That's going to be entitled Reimagine America, An Anthology for the Future. And I just want to put the word out there. And I put up the link so you can go there and see the call for submission. Just wanted everyone to know about that.
Thank you so much, Mark, and that link is in the chat.
Jerry, was that a thumbs up as a hand, as a hand raise or were you just?
Yeah, I couldn't find the hand raise.
Okay, okay. I saw you though. I saw you.
Yeah, I'm gonna announce, I'm gonna be hosting a book launch reading for Beth Rucio, the wonderful poet and actress. And it'll be on December sixth at three PM. And it'll be Laurel Ann Bogan, the wonderful poet here. We'll be introducing her. And it'll be a Zoom event unless I, unless I check out StreamYard or something. If, I'll put my email in the chat so that if anybody's interested, they can contact me. Thank you.
Thank you. And Wendy, you have your hand up? I'm gonna unmute you.
Well, like others, I just wanted to put out a call that. Let me just pop everything up on the chat. I'm the editor of a new poetry anthology for speculative fiction poetry. It's called Eccentric Orbits. This will be volume two. And I'm just having a general call. If you're interested, please email me at wendy@dimensionalfold.com for more details. And I hope we get some respondents. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy. Okay, Toby has a quick thing. I'm gonna unmute you right now, Toby.
Yeah, I was just gonna say real fast that if you, if anybody wants a real walkthrough on how to use any of those platforms, you can just email me. I'm totally happy to do that. But also, one of the things I like about StreamYard is that it's allowed me to, there was like one bookstore, Homer Bookstore up in Alaska, that really, that wanted to do events, but just had zero capacity. And we were able to connect to their Facebook account and stream directly to their Facebook. So there've been a couple of events that like, if you're working with a bookstore, any organization that just cannot do it on their own, it almost allows you to do it for them. Especially if you're like a bookstore that you're really used to working with and they're telling you, I don't have the capacity. My answer got to be like, I will do everything for you one hundred percent. And I will send book sales your way, like you will have the book link. And it's helped me to get events that otherwise, obviously, nobody, nobody would have.
And we have a question in the chat from Lauren. If a reading is incorporated into the workshop, can it still qualify even if the event is mostly a workshop? So if there's a reading in the workshop.
Could you repeat that, Dan Tran, please?
Yeah. If a reading is incorporated into the workshop, can it still?
I can't hear you.
Oh. Can you hear me now? Hear me out, okay. If a reading is incorporated into the workshop, can it still qualify even if the event is mostly a workshop?
That's a good question. Well, we do fund creative writing workshops, so I would think that that would qualify. The, the spirit of the event, if it's, if you're applying for a reading, has to be mainly a reading. But we do fund reading workshop combos as well. So I think the answer for that is yes. And sorry to make you repeat the question. I was responding to something in the chat and then I my brain cross-fired as you were speaking.
Totally, okay.
Do we have any other announcements or questions? Okay, well, I have, I have an announcement. I'd like to just let you know that you can save the date. December ninth, we are doing a county outreach check-in meeting for counties we'd like to reach and especially rural areas. It will be a little bit like this, but it's mainly to give each attendee up to twenty-five because we, we only have a limited amount of time, two minutes to answer a couple of questions and to check in. We're targeting counties where we have not yet funded any literary events. And those include, it's kind of a long list, Alpine, Amador, Butte, Colusa, Contra Costa, Del Norte, Fresno, Glen, Humboldt, Imperial, Inyo, Kern, Kings Lake, et cetera. I'm not gonna read them all because it's, it's a big list. Normally, by this time of year, we would have funded events in a considerable number of those counties, but because of the pandemic, there haven't been as many events. So I'd really like to hear from anybody in those areas. And we will be sending out an announcement probably this week or early next week about that meeting. So if you're interested, if you're in those places, please do try to come. And I'm also very interested in hearing about topics relevant to the literary community that you'd like to see covered in future town halls. So if you have any suggestions about things that you think would be helpful for us to bring to the table, please list them and write them into the chat or you can email me directly. If there is anyone in your world who you feel is doing incredibly important or inspiring work who would be a great person to feature, who could talk on a, a subject that would be relevant to you all. I am open to hearing about those suggestions. We've got two more town halls in the works. So those are probably gonna happen in twenty twenty-one. So send me, send me your ideas. I'd, I'd love to hear them. And last but not least, I just wanted you to encourage you all to check out pw.org, to post your events on our free online literary events calendar. And to look at the rich. and to look at the rich resources available to you on the website. And we will send a roster copy of the chat and an invitation to join our California Literary List Serve if you expressed interest during the registration. So stay tuned for that. And with that, I will just say thank you all so much for joining us. It's great to see all your faces. Ella and Sandy Ago, hi. Susan up in Butte County, hi. Zawadi here in LA, hello. It's, it's a wonderful community and I really appreciate you joining us today. So take care and let me know if you have any ideas for future programs. I will conclude.